Today to help us make decisions that's going to be in best interest of an entire Montgomery County. Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Good morning. This morning, we're going to hear from Director of Elections Alexandria Stevens. Terry Reynolds and Susan Kennedy with Levitate are here to discuss some items. And Executive Director Nick Rankins with Change Young Men on a Mission. In addition, the Sheriff would like to have a few words also. The items to be considered during the formal session. It's a Public Affairs request to submit an application for Innovate Alabama Network Designation and Supplemental Grant. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Is there anything to be added?
I do, I have something. Let's just have one. And that is a... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My mic's not on, I'm sorry Lawrence. That's a thousand dollars out of agency. To Bell and Graff Dixie Baseball. I think it's Bell and Graff and South Lawn Dixie Baseball.
Florence, I'm sorry. Agency revenue?
Yes, sir.
Five hundred dollars to the Alpha Fraternity Dr. King's Annual Breakfast.
Anything else? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. And consider travel training requests for the County Commission and Engineering. We can start off with the Sheriff.
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, audience. Hope you're all having a happy holiday season. Be great, let's go. And I'd like to everybody to thank you. We had our feed the homeless on Thanksgiving. Carmen, her family came out. We had a lot of people. Or something important. You got people coming in, uh-oh, I'm gonna have to start over. I don't want nobody to miss that. But when you see people come up and get a plate and they go outside and sit down on the ground and start eating, that lets you know there's a need. And I'm just so thankful that we had these Doug and all of y'all that came out and supported it and helped feed those people. I mean, that made my heart... I was about to cry, so I had to stop. So I had to go outside. But I thank you all from the bottom of my heart for at least reaching out. We're gonna do it again at Christmas. So I'll be looking for you again at Christmas. So we're gonna go out and feed again. But this morning, I guess I'm gonna give you all an update. I talked to several of you all about adding a fee to car tax. And I got with our county lobbyists. And I gotta get you all to give us a blessing to be able to move forward on that. Right now, we took a major cut in funding. But at the same time, we're buying cars. We were spending four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year on purchase of our vehicles. Now it's up to seven hundred. The accessories that we were buying used to be at the tone of about a hundred thousand dollars for your cages and lights and all this stuff. Now we're looking at a couple hundred thousand. Everything is going up. Car prices after they came off of their strike. We couldn't buy twenty threes, we had to buy twenty fours, which already had an increased price. So we got to look at what's... We're starting to deal with now. And County Government, I know you all just got back from ACCA. And everybody's talking about the cost of expenditures are going up. And with that being said, I'm looking at adding a three dollar fee on car tax to fill that void. That money won't come to me to go to the County Commission for the purposes of maintaining the Sheriff's Office equipment. With that being said, we buy the latest and greatest technology. But people don't think about that comes with a maintenance cost. Every single year, we're paying a maintenance cost. And it's going up every single year. And I think if we don't start looking into the future, we're gonna find ourselves leaving out and losing out on our communities at the hole.
How much money will that three dollar fee generate annually?
Montgomery County, you probably write about a million, million and a half. But if you look at your co-commissioners throughout the state, this ain't nothing new. It's already passed. And just about from the smallest counties, from Cherokee to counties such as Jefferson County, Tuscaloosa, and all your larger counties.
And they did three dollars?
Most of them's right around three dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I understand what the Sheriff has said and appreciate it. And I think it's something we need to look at. But you just don't, you don't raise fees on the wind.
No.
There's gotta be something behind it. And so I think we need a little time to think about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, the only thing we're trying to do is, this is a legislative issue that we're gonna have to draft a bill, then look at it.
We're the commission, we're the ones who pay the bills. And if we felt like we needed some more money to fix your cars, then it would come from here.
Oh, yeah.
So we understand what you're saying and we appreciate it. But it's something we're gonna have to think about.
Oh, and I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying, we need to really look at it.
And I'd like to see the fees in other counties.
Counties.
I'd like to know those exact numbers.
Okay.
Do you want to consider this for a vote at the next meeting or just get more information?
Let's get a little more information and then... How tired are we getting on the legislation, getting it out there? Getting pretty close.
Well, by the time you all approve, we've got to advertise for so many full weeks.
Four weeks.
Yeah.
But my point is, what's the hurry?
Yeah.
I mean, I haven't, you know... We haven't had a problem fulfilling your budget request.
Uh-uh. I never did say we had a problem.
So let us, let us look at it. You know, I mean, we don't have to rush this thing for this year.
Let's get some more information and we'll talk about it next meeting. Fair enough?
Sound good.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? I have.
I don't think you've got anything else on.
All right. Good.
Alexandria Stevens is here to discuss Items One and Two.
Good morning. All right, I have two resolutions that I'm presenting as waiver rule items because according to the Attorney General's opinion, precincts need to be approved at least ninety days in advance of an election. And we are now ninety-one days away as of today. So there's a precinct in District Two and in Commission District Four that needs to be approved for change.
So we're one day under the deadline?
Yes.
Why didn't we get this two weeks ago?
Well, we just got confirmation last week from the precinct in Commission District Four.
Ms. Chairman, we had to actually finalize plays. We worked very closely with Weeping Willow Baptist Church, Weeping Willow Baptist Church and Pastor McTeer and his staff. And so we could assume that they would do it. But we didn't know. And so we just got that finalized. And Sheridan Heights Community Center is gonna go in renovations, you know, right in the middle of this upcoming election. And so we had to have a place. And I think it's an ideal location, Weeping Willow. And so I would certainly recommend we waive rules for both of these locations.
Yeah, so Sheridan Heights was a polling place before and will be in the future, I guess, after.
Yes.
Okay, good.
They'll just be under... Their construction is scheduled to end November of next year.
Well, we gotta get this done. Any objections to waive rules for this?
No objection.
No objection here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Kennedy is here to talk about some ARPA issues.
Thank you, Commissioners. I apologize, Terry and I were supposed to be here today, but in the string of luck we've had, Terry has COVID today. So she apologizes for not being here, but we've talked this morning. So I want to talk about two quick things. One are your individual allocations. So you have, we sent an email to you outlining a process of how that would go and some forms that you can fill out for some individual requests for your individual allocations. And so some of you have sent those in. And we wanted to make sure that you look at your email today. Terry's gonna resend this out. The process for us working compliance on individual requests. We had set a minimum because if you think about it, if you wanted to give fifty thousand dollars to every person, that would be twenty projects per Commissioner, which would be a hundred projects to work compliance on. And I'm not shying away from work. But it would take a long time. And I know there are people that are in need in your districts. And so we were gonna try to get, you know, some larger allocations so that the compliance could be run on those pretty quickly. In an effort to understand that there may be some smaller allocations that you would like to give because the, you know, the folks that you're giving it to really can't, they don't really need a huge amount of money, or you would like to give smaller allocations to more individuals, we've looked at a process to do that. And that process would look like an RFP for a fiscal agent that would receive applications in because, you know, you can't... It's gotta be a public purpose. So we can't just, you know, give money out to whoever comes up and first come, first served. So there has to be sort of an application or a screening process. And we do an RFP for a fiscal agent or a nonprofit that would receive all of those applications through a portal. And then those monies could be granted by that nonprofit or by that fiscal agent, right? And then you would just tell your, the people in your district that wanted funds, you could publicize that and say, here's where you do that. And then you could have smaller amounts that would be given out that we'd work compliance through that 501(c)(3) or that fiscal agent. So I wanted to talk with you, tell you that was coming. We're gonna send you an email that spells that out a little bit better. And then if you have larger projects, please put those in the portal. You're welcome to give one hundred percent of your allocation to one thing. You're welcome to give, you know, split it into four or into ten. But we're trying to keep those in a moving so that you can get that money out, you know, after the first of the year while we work through that compliance. So that's number one. The second thing is there's a resolution that we, you know, there's a two-step process to everything. We come before you and offer the allocations that we've been asked to do resolutions on. And then when a vendor is selected, we come back and tell you there's been a vendor selected in this project or program. And here's the, here's the amount and let us move forward on through the attorneys doing that contract. So we have one of those for the Violence Interruption Project. Remember, I don't know if you recall, but we did an initial RFP for Violence Interruption and we did not get a qualified vendor. We put it back out for bid and we did get a qualified vendor. And so there is a resolution for next meeting that will allow us to move forward on the contract with that qualified vendor for Violence Interruption.
Are we able to see a copy of that contract?
Yes, you can before next week. We don't have it finalized, but we've got the program outlines and I'll be glad to send that to y'all.
Is there a difference between violence prevention and violence interruption?
So you've allocated a million each, a million from the city, a million from the county for Violence Interruption. And then there was an additional allocation of one point five million dollars jointly between the city and the county. So that's another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the total amount that the county has allocated for violence prevention and violence interruption. This first agreement is a Violence Interruption contract. And so you'll see that. We may come back again. You know, they're working on violence prevention right now to try to come up with a... Part of this contract will actually help work on the violence prevention programs as well. But we'll come back for that.
Voting today or to move on our general information items is violence prevention today?
I think it's, it's both. I mean, it's violence and...
What's the difference?
Well, there's not a lot of difference. Violence interruption is generally thought of as like, once there's been a violent occurrence, then you...
Like hospital intervention?
It's like hospital intervention, but it can be a community intervention too. Some of the violence experts have asked that we broaden that outside of just the hospital into the community as well. It can happen in the hospital, but it can also happen in the community. So that's interruption. Violence prevention is more working on the youth side and people that have been justice engaged on the, in the juvenile system and from the schools. And so there is a group working on that as well.
Can any of this money be applied towards police protection or sheriff adding?
Sure. Sure. You've allocated it for violence prevention and interruption. And if we, if there's a program that is, that you want to look at for some of this money, yes. This is a smaller, it won't take the whole money for this particular, it won't take all the money for this particular contract. But one of, one of the things that this contract does is look at how to implement violence interruption and violence prevention in this community and recommends, you know, programmatic stuff for the, for the city and their Office of Violence Prevention.
Any questions for Susan?
Susan, I do have a question.
Yeah.
So when, do you have a deadline that we need to get everything to you so we can get the ball rolling on the money that we have allocated for our projects?
We would love any project yesterday. You know, anytime you want to send them, we, as fast as you can send them, we'll get to work on compliance.
Okay, okay. Well, I think I already sent mine.
You did, you did.
All right.
Yeah, so we, and we'll work on them as we receive them.
Okay.
So we're not waiting for everybody to send theirs in. We'll work on them, we'll work on them as we receive them. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Nick Rankins with Change Young Men on a Mission.
Good morning and thank you for having us. I'm Nick Rankins, the Executive Director with Young Men on a Mission.
And I'm Ashley Robinson. I am the founder of Change Nonprofit Organization. Thank you for allowing us to be here with you all on today. I know I'm a little short, so I hope you all can see me over the screen. I want my heels specifically for you all. So with Change Nonprofit Organization and Young Men on a Mission, our goal is to service individuals in need. Out of Change Community Resource Center, we both are housed, both of our nonprofits are housed. I'll talk a little bit more about Change and then I'll let Nick talk about Young Men on a Mission. But we service underprivileged families through community mobilization, community-based education, mentoring and resources. So all of the services we offer in the community are catered to that. We love the community, we're very passionate about the community. We have mentoring, we have tutoring. We have a barber shop actually that's about to open. You all are the first to hear it. So, you know, if I hear it again, I know it came from somebody in here. But we are having a ribbon cutting ceremony on our new barber shop for unhoused senior citizens. We also do outreach for the homeless or the unhoused. We have community events every single month focused around whatever mental health focus or community drive that is catered to that month, like this month. We will be adopting five schools and we will be providing all of the items on the wish list for the students. We also adopt the children at the Boys and Girls Club, two, twenty-five girls, twenty-five boys. But with everything that we do, there is an amount, there is money that has to go into it. And all of everything that we do is strictly volunteer-based. We don't get paid for anything that we do. We put a lot of personal time, we put a lot of personal money, we put a lot of personal efforts, which is okay because we love the community, we love helping children in need. We have two, we have two tutoring sessions a week. We have tutoring on Mondays with Brentwood Children's Home. We have tutoring on Wednesday at the Change Community Resource Center. We have prevention classes at the Boys and Girls Club on, throughout the week too. So we do a lot. However, it is a price that is taxed along with this. I'll let Nick Rankins talk a little bit about Young Men on a Mission more.
Okay, so I know I've been before you guys before with Young Men on a Mission. We'll continue to grow. It's a blessing now to be able to have the Change Community Resource Center on the west side of Montgomery because that allows us to be able to clean the fresh vegetables and the eggs and different things that we harvest at the community garden to be able to give out to the community. Like Ashley said, the barber shop is coming on Change. It's totally free. Like she said, we'll be cutting hair and different things. We're about to open up a technology lab. If anybody sitting before has ever rode down Rosa Parks Avenue, any time of the evening, night, once the library closed, you see the library is closed. We're about to open a technology lab. So the kids can come over, or adults can come over to use our Wi-Fi to sit inside of a technology lab to do the things they need. Young Men on a Mission, of course, you know, we have the community guard there at 700 Emerson Street on the west side of Montgomery as well. So we just collaborate to continue to do things in the community with our young men in the community.
Also, we have our food pantry and our clothing closet. The food pantry is open every first and third Tuesday from nine thirty to eleven thirty. And the clothing closet, the second and fourth Tuesday from nine thirty to eleven thirty. Special appointments are taken for individuals who are experiencing trying times. And also, I think we failed to say this, we are housed in the old Winston and Prior's doctor's office. And for those of you who do not know about that location, it's a historical location. And it was a place where African-Americans could come and receive healthcare for little to no cost. So we are basically trying to carry on that extension of the Prior and Winston Center by doing great things in the community. We also have all of the land that is behind the building. It's about twenty-seven lots to be exact. And it is undeveloped land that we have plans on making an additional community garden as well as a community park for individuals to come, sit out, enjoy and so forth. But we really just really want the support of you all and the help that you can provide to us because we are doing a lot of good things in the community. We are not limiting ourselves, we want to do more things. However, that's gonna take more funding as well as more time and more help.
So, not to cut you guys off because, you know, I already know about your organization. I have been supporting it, especially at Christmas, for years now. So tell me, tell us, what is your ask from us? What are you looking for, from the County Commission?
We are asking, if you can, we're asking for twenty thousand per year to support our cause.
Okay, okay, all right. You guys already registered with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we've done.
We've done before, okay.
Yeah, we've done. We've registered.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna tell you, you know, I know about you. Like I said, I'm, I've already been hit up now about the Christmas toys I need to deliver for Christmas. So I've been working with you guys for a long time, a great organization. I can't say anything better than what you're doing. My hat's off to you, Nick. You've been out here a long time and people really don't know what you've done out here in the community on your own with your own dollars. I know that personally too. So that, my hat to anybody who puts their work in and walks the walk, not just talking, but they walk their walk with their own, my hat's off to you. And I suggest that whatever we can do to help you, we do.
Thank you.
I second that emotion. Let me just say, Ms. Chairman, if I can, I have witnessed firsthand the work of Nick Rankins. You know, in full disclosure, Nick is a frat brother of mine. And for years, he ran the God Right Program, which is another program that this commission has supported and helped young men in the west side of the community. That garden on Emerson Street was a miracle. That corner was, was doing nothing until he came in there with the kids and they have a garden. They have everything, they had chickens and everything over there. Last time I was over there, I don't know if you still got the chickens, Nick, but... He has really, really worked wonders with those kids. And I've supported you in the past. And I joined Commissioner Ziegler in what she said and would hope that we would consider including you in our deliberations when we think about the donated funds that we get after the first of the year.
Yeah, that's just hit my mind, I need to add them to my list.
I'm just, I'm hoping that we will consider doing that because I know the work that you're doing over there. And I want to come by. I haven't had a chance to come by and ask to tour the Change Center since it's opened. I didn't know you owned all that property and back. There may be something we can help you with back there, I don't know. But you are, you are making a huge difference. I think Nick was once, didn't he, the Community Citizen of the Month?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he's been recognized citywide for his work with our young people. This organization is really, we always wonder what's happening with the money that we give these organizations when they go out. Well, I can tell you, this, they're doing it, they're doing the work. They're actually, and they're not down here all the time asking us for money. So I know you need it. You have my full support. Any questions?
Of course, that's the district I represent. And for me to add anything would be redundant at this time. And so I'll be over there to see what you all are doing. Particularly that location where Dr. Winston and Prior once served the community. I'll be over there and look around. I have some ideas, but, you know, we'll have to get, I'll look at it first.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We have another waiver rule item to consider, that being the transfer of rental tax proceeds.
No objection from you?
Same here, no objection.
It'll be next agenda.
No, it's a waiver rule request.
Oh, waiver rule, I'm sorry.
Oh, you just give it to us. You wake up, you need this cup of coffee, you want me to pass it down to you?
I was, I was going through a text here.
Somebody give him a cough drop.
Give me a, give me a cough drop, no doubt. So no objection to waiver rules.
Thank you. At the last meeting, we presented to you, asked you to consider establishing an allocation of a plant maintenance manager dedicated to the jail and the related position fill request. We have provided some additional information.
My curiosity has been satisfied.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that?
No, I have no problem with it.
It'll be next agenda.
Thank you. Consider a bid award to Armstrong Relocation to provide moving and storage services.
It'll be next agenda.
Consider a board member appointment to the Montgomery County Parks and Recreation. The term of Jenny, Jennifer Roth expires, expired yesterday. And Commissioner Walker has recommended the appointment of Maggie Brooks.
That'll be next agenda.
I believe that's all of our items to consider. There is a letter from our county attorney regarding an executive session concerning pending litigation if you all would like to go into executive session at this time.
We can. Ms. Ellis, is your entire group here now, already here? Or you want to wait till ten o'clock? You want to wait till ten? Okay. You think, I was gonna let y'all go now if you wanted to, because I think y'all want to... Yeah, because we're gonna have a little time. Executive session shouldn't last about fifteen minutes, so... I know many of them came a long way and they got a long way to go back home too, so...
I know that route.
Y'all watch your step as you come down here.
Right.
The Golden Bunch, I like that. The Golden Bunch. Ms. Ellis, if you would introduce yourself and the group you have with you.
I think Mr. Williams has some remarks as well.
James, you want to start off?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here this morning, when I say we, we have our senior group from the Grady Community at the Montgomery County Activity Center. They're here today not asking for anything, but they're actually here today to show their appreciation and also to give you a little token to also show their appreciation.
and also to give you a little token to also show their appreciation. But let me just, I'll be brief. But what I want to say is, what you see here today in our seniors, who, you, you need to understand that it's really important for seniors to remain happy and healthy for a long term.
James, get closer to the mics, people on the, listening on the, can hear you.
It's really important for seniors, where they can remain happy and healthy long term in a way about doing that is engaging. This group here meets every week down at the Activity Center, engaging in several activities. Some of the activities that we do offer, we have arts and crafts, we have board games, quilting, fitness, health and wellness, nutrition class. And this group here has diligently been showing up. We opened up the Activity Center a couple of years ago, roughly in the afternoon from 48. Since then, we have grown more and more programs where we're now open during the day and afternoon. Again, this group here, known as the Golden Bunch, they're there every week. We have a few of the men's that meet on Friday on board games, so if any of y'all want to come down and play some competitive games, dominoes, checkers, we have a group of men's that meet on Fridays as well. At this time, I'm going to let a spokesperson who's going to speak for the Golden Bunch. And again, they're not here asking for anything, they're here to show their appreciation for what y'all have done and what you continue to do.
Good morning, I'm Marion Ellis, and I'm, I guess, the instructor of this group. A lot of them could not come this morning, so they are at the center preparing more crafts that we'll get to see next week when we get back. This bunch, if you're down in the dumps when you get there in the morning, you won't be when you leave. It's supposed to be from 10 to 12, but they do good to get out of there at 1:00. That's how much they love it. And if they don't feel good, they come anyway. And I have just really, really enjoyed working with this group. I give them ideas, but I want them to express themselves. They come up with some of their own ideas. We're using several different things to do with. I'll start off with one of mine. This is using clothespins to make an angel of that, and then putting it on the canvas, and then painting the bottom to it, so... Another one that we'll, we'll be starting is using chain. You dip the chains, or you lay your chains out, put paint over them, then you lay them out on your canvas in different designs, and then pull it. And that makes your flowers, or your design on the canvas, on that. So we're going to be starting that, too. I'm anxious to see how they're going to do. And this is Ms. Ballard. Ballard. And she has a painting here. And we've, we've done a thing that we're all learning from each other. And right now, we've been doing some of the African-American women. And they have taught me a lot about it, and we discuss it, and they do it in their colors. And that's what we have enjoyed. So we're doing a segment on that, different ones have done it. So this is Ms. Ballard's picture that she has done. Even has the mole on the side of the face. This one. Okay, and Alice has taken the Styrofoam cones, wrapped it in yarn, and then decorated it for a Christmas tree. So this is another one of our projects that we've done. Also, we have ribbon, and we've taken the Scrabble tiles and put sayings on the ribbons, or their names, to hang on the Christmas tree. So that's another one. And then Ms. Apple here. This is my blingin' lady. She has come up with some ideas of her own, but she's using the clothespins. So she has painted her canvas, made the different sized stars out of clothespins, and glued them on. And then this one is another one of her ideas of making snowflakes with the clothespins. And she put two trucks on, put the Christmas trees and two deer in the road, because they stay in the road. So she wanted my help on this, so I helped her with it a little bit. But I, like I said, I tell them to be creative, do it their own way. So this is one that she has, another that she's done, my blingin' lady. But we have a lot of fun with it. And then Lila. I just want to make sure I said Lila instead of... She painted the church.
That's pretty.
And using the seed beads and crushed glass that she has put around the door, in the windows to make the stained glass windows. So this is the creation that she did. This was a template that I provided for them, and they do it their way. We kind of make suggestions, we help each other, so we're not just totally on our own all the time. And then I have Shirley, Ms. Shirley here. And this is the first African-American woman that was painted when we decided to do this. And I told her to, because I had done one just in the outlines. And so she took the same picture and put the color to it, and she added the bling as well. She's my troublemaker. So I've got an all name, just about it, but this is one of our African-American creations that we'll be doing, doing. Also, we have another medium that we use. And I had some Christmas trees that I had done on just small canvas, but we didn't have enough of that, so we took the big canvas. She put the Christmas trees on the canvas and used the crushed glass to decorate them with, and to put the snow on the bottom. And then I took it in and poured resin over it. You do not glue any of it down, the resin is what holds it down. So we've had several to do some of these. And then, from my afternoon class, I have Katrina Smith. She did the Highland cow. And if this tells something, I don't know, maybe she won't be too mad with me. But she does have Indian in her. So she took on her own, and she did this picture, and she placed each one of these feathers on this picture herself. So this is going back to part of her heritage there. And then Morgan has been a part of us in the afternoon, but she...
I spared y'all. Just to say thank you, it's such an important group that I get to be a part of when I can. And it shows that, you know, we use the facilities and the funds that are given to us down there. It's important, thank you for District 5, and we just really appreciate it.
Now, we have, in our morning class, we have like 20 ladies that show up. Now, they don't all get to come at the same time, but we have no less than 14, and a maximum of at least 17 that are there. And then we have an afternoon class, and we have approximately the same amount come, all of them. So we've really had a good time, we appreciate y'all's support. And we have a little token appreciation, it's not much, but it's handmade by some of the ladies. So...
Thank you.
Well, Mary says something about, I want to thank each of y'all for being here. Very amazed by the hard work you all are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's pretty, thank you, ladies.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, because I always call you the mayor of Mayberry.
This is going on the truth.
Yeah.
This is going on the truth.
Yeah, they were just putting it out. They were just putting chills.
I had to put them a tree.
Coach Payne and a parking wreck have done a great job in that center with all the different activities. The old South Montgomery County Academy closed about, how many years ago? About six, seven years ago, eight years ago, something like that. And if it wasn't for my fellow commissioners, that would be an empty building down there. There's already one empty school building down there, there's fixing to be a second empty school building down there. And this would have been the third one. But I'm thankful to our commissioners who stepped up and said, "We're not going to leave this blighted property down, and we're going to make something useful out of it." And we made it a community center, and it's been growing, and it's very vibrant with youth and adults. So I want to thank our commission personally for making this happen, and also thank all these ladies and gentlemen that are involved and participate in this championship. Oh, yeah, let's get a picture.
That's why we got the same bump.
Go all the way down to the end.
I'll take the picture.
And I'll have to say, while we're getting in line...
Well, we got them.
This group, if you're sick, if you're down, you're prayed for. So we, we just, we have a great time together, and I just couldn't ask for a better bunch than what we have.
Turn, turn around, Ms. Stewart.
James, you want to get in?
Come on, James.
Come on, James.
James. You're part of, you're part of the family.
While we're doing this, I thank Mr. Williams and Coach Payne, too, for their support that they have given us.
All right, everybody, look at me. One, two, three. All right, we're going to do one more. One, two.
Thank y'all, ladies.
Oh, we go to executive session.
I need to have a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Oh, please say aye.
Aye.
We're going to move into executive session, we'll be back at 10 o'clock for the formal session. 10 o'clock, formal session.